Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Tuesday, September 21 Sioux Falls City Council meeting. Thanks for joining us tonight. We'll go ahead and get started by reading our roll, please, Tom.
Council members Erickson.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Kylie.
Here.
Knightsert.
Here.
Selberg.
Here.
Sale.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
Brecky.
Here.
All right, with us tonight to give our invocation is Pastor Larry Forstall with New Beginnings Faith Church. Pastor Larry, thanks for being back here at SE Rice for his invocation and then stay standing for our Pledge of Allegiance.
I want to thank all the council members and the mayor for all the work you're doing in our city. I thank you for your leadership and the time that you're giving. I appreciate it. I thank you. Father, in the name of the Lord Jesus, I come before you tonight on behalf of these council members and the mayor. I pray, Father, that you protect them and keep them from all harm, as you lead them, guide them, and direct them, give them wisdom in all the affairs of this city. And, Father, in the name of Jesus, I'm praying that you bless them, comfort them, and encourage them, Father, concerning all that they give in this city, that it come back to them abundantly. Now, Father, give them wisdom, give them understanding. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Pastor Larry, thanks for being here tonight for that. We'll move on to our next item, item four. It's our consent agenda. Look for a motion there or any changes?
Move approval.
Second Jensen.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen. Any discussion on that, council? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Council members Erickson. Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightsert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Then we'll move on to item nineteen, which is our regular agenda. Look for a motion there.
Move to approve.
Second Jensen.
All right, motion by Kylie, seconded by Jensen. Any discussion on that motion, council? All right, let's vote on that one, please.
Council members Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightsert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Before we move on to the rest of the agenda, just want to review how public input will work for our regular agenda items. Comments are limited to three minutes unless the item is being presented for final adoption, in which case public input will be five minutes. For regular agenda items, comments are limited to the agenda item under consideration at that time only. And during general public input at the end of the meeting, comments will be limited to no more than three minutes per person. With that being said, we'll move on to our next item, please, Tom.
Item. Item twenty, new 2021-22 retail malt beverage, South Dakota Farm Wine License for SAR by Van Essens, 430 East Eighth Street, CUP not required. Pending final inspections for Health and Building Services. Item twenty-one, new 2021 retail wine insider license for Crawford's, 214 South Phillips Avenue, CUP not required. Item twenty-two, transfer of 2020-21 retail liquor license, including video lottery terminals from Q Club Incorporated, Lucky's 224 South Phillips Avenue to LKN LLC Lucky's 224 South Phillips Avenue, CUP not required. Item twenty-three, transfer of 2021 retail liquor license from Severance Beer LLC, 701 North Phillips Avenue, Suite 110, to Papa Woody's Woodfire Pizza Incorporated, 775 North Phillips Avenue, CUP not required. Pending final inspections for Health and Building Services.
Good evening, Jamie.
Good evening, Jamie Palmer with Licensing. I'm here to answer any questions that you have for items twenty through twenty-three.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Anyone from the public who would like to speak on items twenty to twenty-three?
Move approval, Erickson.
Second Kylie.
Oof, I'm going to give that to Councilor Kylie. Motion by Erickson, seconded by Kylie to approve these items. Any discussion there, council? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Council members Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightsert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Move to our next item, please.
Item twenty-four, second reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, approving the naming of a facility space on public property sponsors the mayor.
Hey, Jeff.
Good evening, council. Jeff Eckhoff, Planning and Development Services. You know, when you're director, you get to a lot of cool things, but tonight is one of those extra special terrific honor for me to bring this to you tonight. The second reading of the approval of the naming for the chief, Matt Burns, range at the Public Safety Training Center. It meets all the criteria of the new naming ordinance the council started led a year, year and a half ago and recommend your approval. Thank you.
Jeff, thanks. I pass the gavel to council chair Sale. I'll just speak a little bit to this as well. Spoke about it at first reading. Chief, thanks for being here this evening. Yeah, it's my honor to be sponsoring this and name our shooting range after Chief Matt Burns. I'm not going to go into his bio like I did in the first reading, but I do know that Matt Burns has had incredible impact on our PD. And Matt, we really, we miss you. The department's doing all right, but your legacy is certainly living on each day. I see it when I'm talking with folks. And the groundwork you laid during your time in the department is so appreciated. As you know, Matt retired July 23. We have this new facility that will actually be getting bids on this week. Cross your fingers, tough bidding climate, so we'll see how those come in. We do have the opportunity for some larger naming, right, opportunities for the entire campus. We continue to pursue those as a city as well. But Matt, having such a strong history in munitions and firearms, and it's kind of one of his forties. We thought there could be no better honor than to hire his legacy, than to honor his legacy with the naming of this range. So Jeff, thanks for introducing it. I would really appreciate your support on this item. Chief, thanks for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there anybody from the public who wishes to speak on this item? Counselors, questions? Counselor Kylie.
No questions. I'll be very brief, other than to say this is well deserved, well deserved, and it is my honor to vote yes on this item this evening.
Counselor Selberg.
Thank you. Yes, nice to see you. Whenever I think of Chief Burns, I think integrity and honor and hardworking and always having Sioux Falls what's best for Sioux Falls at heart. I also remember the time or two, a handful of times, when I asked him to take part in something charitable wise, and I think each time before I even got the request out, the answer was yes. So you're a good man. Appreciate all you've done for Sioux Falls. Congrats on an amazing career. I can't think of anybody more deserving.
Thank you. Other counselors? None? Look for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second Kylie.
Moved by Brecky, seconded by Kylie. Tom, can we get a vote, please?
Council members Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightsert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Thank you. That passes eight to nothing. Congratulations.
You didn't think you'd be back at council meetings there, chief, did you? So you can certainly stay for the rest if you want. We'll move on to item twenty-five.
Item twenty-five, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, providing supplemental appropriations to fund fire and transit operations. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, October 5, 2021. Sponsors the mayor.
Sam, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Sam Trebelcock, City of Sioux Falls, Planning and Development. What we have, there's two different amendments here. I think one of them, of course, is an amendment, $250,000 amendment for transit radios. Was planned for 2023. We're going to bring it through then, but due to expected supply chain issues, and there is a deadline for the state radio system in 2023, we didn't want to take any chances that that could cause a problem. So certainly, that's the reason what we're bringing forward the transit amendment for that, for the radios. The funding will come out of Transit Fund reserves for this amendment, just so you know that. That's money that we'd expected. So with that, I would take any questions.
All right, thank you, Sam. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to item twenty-five here tonight? All right, council, you got any questions for? Come on up, Sam. Other Sam. There you go.
Sam Stanforth, Finance, Physicianals for Fire. Chief Macarabie, while he's going to be here, I'm guessing he's running a little late. So the other part of this amendment was just the $200,000 overtime for fire operations. Had a few items with COVID, few early retirements. The other piece was discussions last year about doing a training class prior to Station 12 opening this year with COVID that got pushed back, and so we started this year down basically a full class. So with that class being pushed back, we've had some extra overtime this year that we're seeing, so that's the reason for the fire overtime.
Yeah, you bet. Thank you, Sam. Appreciate you jumping in on that. All right, so that's the second half of that with the fire piece. Anyone from the public want to speak on that, that portion of this? All right, council, do you have any questions for Sam or Sam on this?
I'll move to set a second reading for Tuesday, October 5, 2021.
Second Kylie.
All right, motion by Knightsert, seconded by Kylie for that second reading date. Any discussion? All right, we'll take a vote on that, please.
Council members Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightsert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
All right, that one passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Mr. Mayor, I need to recuse myself on this item. I own property right next to the.
All right, thank you, Council Erickson. You're recused. We'll move to item twenty-six.
Item twenty-six, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at 1737 South Cliff Avenue from the O Office District to the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District, number 14852-2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, October 5, 2021. Private applicants, Core States Group Incorporated, Ben Mayo.
Albert, good evening.
Evening. Albert Schmidt, City of Sioux Falls, Planning and Development Services. So this location is just kind of to the west of South Cliff Avenue, just north of East 26th Street. It's a portion of an overall development. The portion of the rezoning is only .35 acres, and the purpose is to build a new gas station at this location. Looking for a second reading.
All right, thanks, Albert. Anyone from the public here to speak on item twenty-six? All right, council, you have any questions for Albert here?
Move approval.
Second Jensen.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, October 5. Any discussion on that motion? All right, let's vote on that one, please.
Council members Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightsert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
That passes seven to zero. Council Erickson is back, and we'll move to item twenty-seven.
Item twenty-seven, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at 6,000 South Cliff Avenue from the C3 Commercial Community, C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar, and O Office Districts, the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar, and RA3 Apartment Residential High Density Districts, number 14861-2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, October 5, 2021. Private applicant Signature Companies LLC, Clint Ackerman.
So this location is just at the northeast corner of South Cliff Avenue and East 69th Street, if you remember the original, original South Side Walmart. This is that location. That was since been rezoned to C2 and C3 and Office. Now developers coming through with actual plan here for developing the area. Size is roughly 17.42 acres in size. And as you can see, they're breaking it down to C2, and then apartments to the north there to kind of help with that transition to that side. Sustained recommend approval and looking for a second reading. Here's the kind of rough layout of how that kind of looking to go conceptually. Thank you.
All right, Albert, thank you. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Council, any questions for Albert here? Counselor Knightsert, go ahead.
I don't think a motion, but it's just, this one does have a long history. It was going to be a Hy-Vee before it was going to be a Walmart, and then it kind of sat there and finally to see it developing. So I move to set a second reading for Tuesday, October 5, 2021.
Second Kylie.
All right, motion by Knightsert, seconded by Kylie. Discussion, council, on that motion? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Council members Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightsert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Okay, that one passes eight to zero. Next item.
Mr. Mayor, I need to recuse myself on this one.
Council Erickson, you are recused. Item twenty-eight. Go ahead, Tom.
Item twenty-eight, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at 719 South Second Avenue from the RT1 Single Family Residential Traditional District to the RT2 Town Home Residential Traditional District, number 14865-2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, October 5, 2021. Private applicant TAGR Properties.
So this location is kind of more central located, south of East 25th Street and west of South Second Avenue at the 7119 South Second Avenue. It's only .17 acres in size. And really, why it's coming for you is it's an existing house that needs to be rezoned to be conforming. So we're just proposing rezoning to make it conforming so they can rebuild and fit the standard.
Got it.
Take any questions?
Thanks, Albert. Anyone from the public here to speak to item twenty-eight tonight? Council, any questions here?
Move to approve Kylie.
Second Jensen.
All right, motion by Kylie, seconded by Jensen to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, October 5. Any discussion on that motion? All right, we'll vote on that one, please.
Council members Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightsert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Okay, that passes seven to zero. Council Erickson is back, and we'll move on to item twenty-nine.
Item twenty-nine, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at 924 South Second Avenue from the RT1 Single Family Residential Traditional District to the RT2 Town Home Residential Traditional District, number 14870-2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, October 5, 2021. Private applicants, Ryan and Christine Carlson.
So this location is right at the northeast corner of South Second Avenue and East 18th Street. There's actually two properties and two buildings involved in this rezoning. Both are actually the same design of house, built by the same builder, and both are two family dwelling units that currently need to be rezoned to become conforming, just like the last one. I'll take any questions you have.
Thanks, Albert. Anyone from the public here to speak on item twenty-nine? Council, you got any questions for Albert on item twenty-nine?
Move approval.
Second Jensen.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, October 5. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on it, Tom.
Council members Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightsert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Item thirty, please.
Item thirty, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at 4050 South Grange Drive from the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District to the I-1 Light Industrial District, number 14930-2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, October 5, 2021. Private applicants, Lampard Scott's Lumber, Dennis Hoyt.
So this location is just next to Scott's Lumber, just on the north side of I-29, west of Minnesota Avenue there. Basically, in addition to Scott's Lumber in the future, as the 49th Street project comes through, just rezoning to get that prepped and ready to go. I could take any questions you might have.
Thanks, Albert. Anyone from the public here to speak on item thirty? Council, got any questions here? Look for a motion to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, October 5.
So moved Erickson.
Second Sale.
All right, motion by Erickson, seconded by Sale. Any discussion there? All right, we'll take a vote on that, please.
Council members Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightsert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item.
Item thirty-one, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at 250 North Ellis Road from the AG Agriculture District to the PO PUD Pedestrian Oriented PUD District, number 14943-2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, October 5, 2021. Private applicant, WS Construction Management LLC.
So this one is at the northeast corner of South Ellis Road and West 12th Street, excuse me, West 12th Street. It's one of our larger ones tonight, 40.65 acres total in size. A lot of that, however, is water area, so there's actually less buildable area for land. This one is a very exciting one on our side of things, just to see something come in here develop wise and be a commercial use on the west side. So we're actually very supportive of this on the planning side. We've been working very closely with the applicant, and if you go through the staff report, you'll see the details involved in there because this is a pedestrian oriented planned unit development district. So we have some shared things in there, things like that. So they're looking at doing a commercial district along the boardwalk, and I'll show you kind of the conceptual plan here. And so again, when you think of PO PUDs, pedestrian oriented PUDs, we're trying to get things where we can have people to park in one spot and walk amongst the area to easily encourage that easy transition of getting from one business to another. And the water boardwalk and then the front side of things should hopefully help to encourage that and get a lot of nice use in this area. And again, mainly, main use here is a commercial use with that kind of water side feel for that side of things. So can take any questions you may have?
All right, thanks, Albert. Anyone from the public want to speak on item thirty-one? Council, you got any questions for Albert on this one?
Move approval. Second Knightsert.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Knightsert to set a second reading for Tuesday, October 5. Any discussion here on this one? All right, let's vote on it, please.
Council members Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightsert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
All right, that one passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Next item, item thirty-two, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at 601 East Eighth Street from the I-2 Heavy Industrial District to the DT PUD Downtown PUD District, number 14949-2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, October 5, 2021. Private applicant, Norman Engineering Incorporated, Aaron Norman.
So this location is just on East Street, just east of downtown, looking to rezone into the downtown PUD, approximately just under one acre, at .99 acres. And the purpose here is for redevelopment of this site into more of a commercial use on that side of things. So I could take any questions you have?
Thanks, Albert. Anyone from the public here to speak on item thirty-two? Counselors, you got any questions tonight for Albert? All right, look for a motion to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, October 5.
So moved Jensen.
Second Erickson.
All right, motion by Jensen and seconded by Erickson. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that one, please.
Council members Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightsert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item thirty-three, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located east of South Darrell Place and South Highline Avenue from the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar and C3 Commercial Community Districts to the CN Conservation and LW Live Work Districts, number 14961-2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, October 5, 2021. Private applicant, Legacy Development and Consulting Company LLC, Darren Ketchum.
Excellent. So this one's over on the east side in the Dolly Farm area, just on the west side of Evans Parkway, just south of East 18th Street. So kind of by the Glow Hotel area. So what's happened here is the area's been developing finally, and so you're kind of seeing the finalized parcel areas. So you're seeing the final uses where things are going. So that's really what we're seeing here is just reorganizing of that for the final development. So the final use is going to fit in the live work, and they're rezoning to that, having the CN where they're going to have their ponds on the north side. Can take any recommendations or any questions you got, but this total size for this one is 4.39 acres in size total between the two, Live Work and CN.
All right, thanks, Albert. Anyone from the public wish to speak to item thirty-three? All right, council, any questions for Albert on this one? Look for a motion, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, October 5.
So moved Sale.
Second.
Second? All right, seconded by Counselor Brecky. Any discussion there? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote, please.
Council members Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
No.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightsert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
No.
Brecky.
Yes.
That item passes six to two. Next item, please.
Item thirty-four, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at 7409 South Minnesota Avenue from the AG Agriculture District to the C3 Commercial Community District, number 14967-2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, October 5, 2021. Private applicant, Roger Lamp.
All right, so this one's on the south side of town, just south of the Landscape Garden Center location, current location, South Minnesota Avenue. It's 2.57 acres in size, and the purpose here is just preparing for commercial development to go along with the redevelopment of that area. So can take any questions you have.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone here to speak on item thirty-four from the public?
Move to set the second reading for Tuesday, October 5.
Second Jensen.
All right, motion by Erickson, seconded by Jensen. Any discussion on that? All right, let's take a vote on that, please.
Council members Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightsert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
All right, that one passes eight to zero. Item thirty-five.
Item thirty-five, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at 5500 East 18th Street from the RA3 Apartment Residential High Density District to the S1 General Institutional District, number 14980-2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, October 5, 2021. Private applicant, Van Busker Companies, Ryan Tisdale.
So this location is also just near the Dolly Farm area, but actually on the west side. This location's been talked about for a while for the new Active Generations location. This is a rezoning to help go through that process. They, we asked them to go through this route just to make sure it kind of matched up a little better, and they are entertaining our request. And so this request to go to S1 covers 6.24 acres of the property, so you can kind of see that here, that little S1. And then they'll redevelop the rest accordingly with their partners. But this question should be a great location for this facility, and we're excited about helping to get this pushed through.
All right, thanks, Albert. Anyone from the public wish to speak to item thirty-five?
Move to set the second reading for Tuesday, October 5.
Second Jensen.
All right, motion by Erickson, seconded by Jensen. Any discussion on that motion, council? All right, let's take a vote on that, please.
Council members Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightsert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Move to item thirty-six, please.
Item thirty-six, first reading in ordinance, amending the joint zoning regulations for Minnehaha County and the city of Sioux Falls by amending Chapter 159, Subchapter C, Commercial, I-1 Industrial, and Definitions.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightsert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Move to item 36, please.
Item 36, first reading in ordinance, amending the joint zoning regulations for Minnehaha County and the city of Sioux Falls by amending Chapter 159, Subchapter C, Commercial, I1 Industrial, and Definitions. The Minnehaha County Planning Commission recommends approval five to one, and the Sioux Falls Planning Commission recommends approval seven to zero. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for the Joint Sioux Falls City Council-Minnehaha County Commission meeting of Tuesday, September 28, 2021. Sponsors, the mayor.
Good evening again, Sam Tribelcock, City of Sioux Falls Planning and Development. Again, this is first reading on an ordinance with Minnehaha County and City of Sioux Falls where we sit together to make decisions within that joint jurisdictional area. This is again for medical cannabis. So just a couple slides, ordinance timeline. Planning Commission, as Tom had just mentioned, both planning commissions recommend approval. Tom has already shown a change. We should have, it was seven to zero for the Planning Commission for City of Sioux Falls. First reading, Minnehaha County was September 7th. First reading here tonight for City of Sioux Falls. If you decide to place it on and move it on, it would go to second reading where, again, everybody would sit jointly at the joint meeting September 28th. And then you can see the rest of the publications of the different ordinances, and the ordinance adoption would be October 22nd for Sioux Falls', and for Minnehaha County, county ordinances would be November 4th. Just how the different publications kind of follow. Kind of taking you through the summary details, obviously, there's three different ones, so I think it's important to kind of note the slight differences between all of them. This particular ordinance, dispensaries only are allowed, and they're allowed within the commercial and light industrial districts. The type of use that it is, it's a permitted special use, a conditional use because of that is allowed and can be submitted and applied for if it does not meet the standards. Types of sensitive uses, single-family dwellings, elementary, middle, and high schools, church, daycare, park, and public use facilities. The spacing distance between sensitive uses is 1,000 feet, and there's that spacing distance between medical dispensaries is 1,000 feet. No co-location is allowed within this ordinance. There also is other conditions within this ordinance. Proof of registration, hours of operation, under 18, disposal plan, security plan. A lot of times, those are in the license ordinance and ordinance, and this particular one, it is included in within the zoning section of the ordinance. With that, I would take any questions.
All right, thank you, Sam. Anyone from the public here to speak on item 36 tonight? Counselors, do you have any questions for Sam on this one?
Move approval.
Knightsert.
Second, Erickson.
All right, motion by Knightsert, seconded by Erickson. Any discussion, counsel, on that motion to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, September 28? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote, please.
Good evening. How are you doing tonight?
Good.
Travis Larson with the City of Sioux Falls Engineering Department. Item 37 is a resolution releasing a portion of a permanent utility easement in Lot 1, Block 8 of Prairie Hills South Edition. First, I'd like to request a motion to amend item 37 to replace the map that was attached with this Exhibit A that I received from the survey. This permanent easement was established by Resolution 15406, which was a right-of-way vacation for South Kiwanis Avenue. No facilities are located within this easement. The property owner is looking to build an addition, and so we're just looking to help clean up their property. Easement is no longer needed, and engineering requests your support and approval.
All right. Anyone from the public here to speak on item 37?
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Jensen.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a motion to amend by substituting the Exhibit A exhibit with the one labeled Exhibit A easement release?
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion to amend by Erickson, seconded by Jensen. Any discussion on that? All right, let's vote on the amendment, please.
Council members Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightsert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
All right, the amendment passes eight oh. Now we're back to the main motion as amended by Counsel Erickson, seconded by Jensen. Any discussion there? All right, hearing none, we'll take a vote, please.
Council members Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightsert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
All right, that item passes eight to zero. Counselors, do we have any new business to bring forward tonight? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to public input. We're at general public input portion of our agenda this evening. And as a reminder, input during this portion will last no more than three minutes per person. So at this time, anyone for general public input can come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening. Dennis Algen, Sioux Falls. All I'm doing here is a little recommendation.